Good afternoon. Today is Monday, March 25th, 2024. It is 5:00 PM and we are here for a regular trustee meeting. If those that can join us, please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have an agenda before us. Are there any modifications or additions?
None from staff.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for March 25th, 2024 meeting and excuse Mrs. Dean.
Second.
Ms. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Kratz?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept the general ledger report in the amount of $369,420.83 for the 3/20/24 payroll.
Second.
Ms. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Kratz?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept the payment listings report in the amount of $703,562.69 for warrants through 3/21 of 24.
Second.
Ms. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Kratz?
Yes. We have minutes before our March 11th, 2024 regular trustee meeting. Are there any changes or additions? If not, do we have a motion to approve as presented?
I have a motion for the March 11th, 2024 regular trustee meeting to be approved as presented.
Second.
Ms. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Kratz?
Yes. This time, we offer the podium to any citizens desiring to speak. There's an awful lot of you here. All right, we'll move on. We have no old business. And Mr. Rushing, we'll turn it over to you for new business.
Thank you, Board. First item you'll notate is the Beaver Creek Community Library. Board, as you know, we are the owners of the Beaver Creek Community Library in terms of the facility as well as the land. From time to time, we are also asked to make difficult decisions and to discuss those in public setting. So with that, I'll turn it over to the Chair of the Board. We do have a lot of guests here from the Beaver Creek Library system. I believe they actually have the entire Board here as well. They'd be happy to answer any questions that we may have, including the President of the Board as well, Ms. Carol Graff. So, Mr. Kratz, I'll turn it over to you.
Step up the podium, Ms. Graff. First, thanks everybody for being here.
My name and address?
Please.
Carol Graff, 1442 Deboe Drive, Beaver Creek, Ohio.
How long have you lived at that address? How long have you lived at that residence?
Fifty years.
Fifty years, okay. Now, can you tell us roughly what the budget of the library is?
I'm not here to say-
Can you tell us roughly what the annual budget of the library is?
Fourteen million. Here's the X figure.
Can you tell us how many gallons are in the Pacific Ocean? How many gallons?
We'll look it up for you.
Okay. I'm confident there's a book in the library that has that information somewhere.
I have such a wonderful Executive Director here and a Deputy Director of the Library. They can answer all the questions.
Okay. Okay. Can they answer the question of do they know why we're here this evening?
Yes, we've been informed that we're here to talk about the parking lot.
Okay. Okay. And have you been involved in the redesign of that parking lot?
No.
Okay. Now, did you boycott it or was there a reason?
I don't think we've been- we've not discussed it as a board because I think the township was going to be doing it.
Okay. What do you think of the signage on the library right now? Do you think the signage is adequate?
On the outside?
On the outside, yeah.
Seeing as I know where it is, I don't look for the signage very often, so I assume it's okay. I guess it's always busy.
Okay. How long have you lived in Beaver Creek, Mrs. Graff?
Pardon me?
How long have you lived in Beaver Creek?
Fifty-seven years.
Fifty-seven years, okay. And how long have you been going to that library?
As long as it's been there. I hope- I was on the Board when we built it.
You were, okay. How many years have you been on the Board for the library?
You're- this Board?
Yeah.
Nineteen.
Nineteen for the Library Board?
Yes.
Okay.
I have longevity at a lot of places.
Are you happy with the Director of the Library?
I'm superbly happy. I got- I was on the- I'm the only one on the Board who was still on the Board when he was hired.
Okay. What's the name of the library? What's the name of the library?
Ours is Green County Library, Beaver Creek branch.
Okay. Does it say that?
But we call the- no, it says Beaver Creek Community Library.
Beaver Creek Community Library.
And probably because in Green County, we are different from many of the other counties. Green County, the- other than Xenia, the individual jurisdictions where the libraries are, those library buildings are owned or leased by the jurisdiction. Xenia Library is owned by the Library Board. So that other places, like all the Dayton libraries who are owned by the Dayton- I don't know who the wrong- well, our buildings are owned by you. So the Beaver Creek Library, you own the building, you take care of the entire structure, take care of the driveway, you take care of the parking lot, you do the striping and whatever else is necessary. The library actually operates the interior of the library, whatever it takes with the books and the daily operations and all of that sort of thing.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the background. So what we hear as a Board very often from residents is that they know where the library is at, but they don't know what it's called other than the library. And so then we also hear that a lot of people have heard of Carol Graff, but they don't know really that much, you know, about why you're connected to the library. So what's your connection with the library? Why do you have such an affinity for the library?
I'm connected to the library because nineteen years ago, I was appointed as Beaver Creek Representative to the library, the Green County Library. We have seven Board members and each of us represents one of the libraries in Green County. And so we bring forth to the library what our communities need.
Also mention how you work part of the building.
Right. I was on the Township Trustee Board in 1978 when we put the levy on- it was a two mil levy, two mil, two year, I think it was, on the ballot and it was approved and we built the library, which was opened in 79. When the renovation of the library took place, which would begin back something like 93 or so, I was again a trustee. And then when we expanded the library, I was a trustee. So I was on the Library Board and the Board of Trustees. So I saw the building of the library and the renovations of the library and the operations from both sides for many years.
So you- one would say that you have- you're connected, very- you have a deep connection.
A little bit. Yes. I'm an avid reader and one of my children is a librarian. So we are very library oriented.
Okay. I think at this point, I'll turn it over to Ms. Wallace. I think there's something that we need to address and we just wanted the Library Board here.
Would you stand up? So, you want to go ahead? Okay. We'd like to have Resolution Number 202-403-25-ADMIN-E, adoption date, March 25th, 2024. A resolution renaming the Beaver Creek Community Library, the Carol Graff Beaver Creek Library. Let me finish the resolution. Whereas Carol Graff has served the Beaver Creek community in more ways that can be listed, but among those are serving as an elected member of Beaver Creek City Council, Mayor of the city of Beaver Creek, and as a Beaver Creek Township trustee for 24 years. And as Green County Public Library System has been a point of pride for Carol Graff's public and community service that has spanned well over 40-plus years. And whereas Carol Graff has served as a member of the Green County Public Library Board of Trustees since January 7th, 2005, and has served as President of the Board since 2007. And whereas Carol Graff was instrumental in the building and expansion of the present library even prior to her services on the Library Board and oversaw the remodeling in 2016 as Board President. And whereas Carol Graff's strategic vision for the library has guided the Green Public Library System to its present successes, including numerous national awards and recognition within Green County, where it serves as a hallmark of all of her community service. Now, therefore, it'd be resolved by the Board of Beaver Creek Township Trustees, Section 1, the Beaver Creek Community Library, and henceforth, named the Carol Graff Beaver Creek Library, in recognition of Carol Graff's commitment to and a legacy of the Green County Public Library System. Further, it'd be resolved that all formal actions of the Board of Trustees concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution are being adopted at a duly called and authorized open meeting of the Board of Trustees on the date set forth above, such meeting being duly called pursuant to and in compliance with all legal requirements, including what Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code.
Thank you so much.
I didn't second that.
I didn't second that.
Well, I'm thanking her.
Second.
Ms. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Kratz?
Absolutely.
Mr. Cologne, if you want to say a few words, other Director of the Library? Trustee Kratz, Trustee Wallace, Fiscal Officer Zeharyev, Counselor Frick, Administrator Rushing, gathered friends. My name is Carl Cologne and I have the pleasure of serving as the Executive Director of the Green County Public Library. It is right and wonderful that you have honored one of Beaver Creek's most dedicated servants through this act. To understand Carol's impact on the library, it's bigger than I can explain, but a couple of stories might suffice. When I got the job in 2007, I came in from out of town. And the first thing she said to me was, "You'll be going now to the Township Trustees Meeting. It's second Tuesdays." Okay. So I went with the boss and I got introduced around. And I realized very, very quickly, when I look at this room and I see all the people that I've served with, and I remember the welcome that I got from them, that welcome almost always came because of an introduction from Carol Graff. And when I was introduced by Carol Graff, there was a stamp on me that I was okay. And that guarantee that Carol Graff stood with me has been the foundation of service with so many of you. A service that I need you to understand has always started usually with a phone call, and it's usually at night, that starts with, "Hey, Chief, um, we have this idea and I, um, you know, it's, I want to know what you think." And the answer sometimes would be, "Okay," or, "That's interesting. How did you come up with that?" she'll say. Or she'll go, "Yeah, let's turn that. Let's turn that. We can come up with something better." But those ideas have names. They have names like the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, the Green County version of which is now the national model for public-private partnerships in literacy coalitions. They have names like Spark Place, Makerspace, which we have been recognized by the Smithsonian Institution for. They have names that are simpler, like Storytime. They have names that are- how do- they're names that literally go on and on and on. You have to understand, when you're the Green County Public Library, you're serving a community because of our military families that's worldwide. And I needed to learn how to serve from Alpha to Afghanistan. And I learned that at Tootledge of Carol Graff. It is my pleasure to take a moment to introduce the Green County Public Library Board of Trustees, and I'm just going to do it in the order that I see them. Marcia Velas, Yvonne Kraft-Harshaw, Kevin Stokes, Ron Folkerth, Joan Dotell, and Jeff Brock. So I note for the record that the entirety of the Green County Board of Library Trustees has turned out today to watch Carol receive this honor. And on their behalf, and on behalf of the 165,000 Green County community members that we serve, I thank you.
Thank you.
Board, if you want to go down, Ms. Graff, you'll take some photos and then we'll invite the Library Board to join.
You totally realize I'm going to get fired for having me.
Well, thank you, Board. Moving on to our next new business item. We have been presented with a gracious opportunity by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. This is a continuation of a project that we started about three years ago, which is the cleanup of the Little Miami River. With us this evening, we do have a representative from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, the gentleman who's in charge of the Scenic Rivers Program, Mr. Bob Gable. And I'd like to introduce him, if you want to come to the podium and just give a brief overview of what you do for ODNR and what this grant opportunity means to us, and then happy to answer any questions from the Board.
Yes, thank you. Trustee Kratz, Trustee Wallace, my name is Bob Gable. I'm the Scenic River Program Manager for the Department of Natural Resources. You need my address?
No.
Oh. So I oversee the Scenic Rivers Program, the implementation of Scenic Rivers Program across the state of Ohio. So we currently have 15 designated wild scenic and recreational rivers across the state. And these rivers, they do receive a legal designation. It's defined in the Ohio Revised Code by the Director of the Department of Natural Resources. So they are offered some additional protections. And the idea behind the Scenic Rivers Program is to identify some of the highest quality streams remaining in the state of Ohio and designate them as wild scenic or recreational rivers, an effort to protect them for the long term, well into the future for future generations. So the Scenic Rivers Program actually has its roots here in southwest Ohio. Glenn Thompson was editor of the, I believe it was the Dayton Herald at the time, and he loved to paddle the Little Miami River. So he was really the founder of the state and national Scenic Rivers Program. And he worked to have legislation passed in 1968, which created our state Scenic Rivers Program. It was actually the first one in the nation, and actually predated the National Scenic Rivers Program, which was later passed in October of 68. State legislation was passed in February of 68. So subsequent to that, the Little Miami was the first state scenic river designated in 1969. And it was also the first nationally designated scenic river in the state in 1973. So, and it is also the longest designated river in the state currently, with the whole 108 miles being designated as state scenic river, from the headwaters of South Charleston all the way to the confluence with the Little Miami River. So you should be very proud that you have an outstanding resource like this in your community and have for so long. And, you know, we've worked on the conservation and protection of the system for a very long time. When I started with DNR, I've been with them for 32 years now. I started in the southwest Ohio region and actually was responsible for the management of the Little Miami River. So I've seen it change over all that time, from the mid-'90s till now. And this river, of all the rivers designated across the state, this river has more challenges than any of them, I'll be honest with you. With the urbanization and the amounts of efflu and stormwater and all these different complex variables that come into the equation of protecting and conserving this river, it makes it very challenging. So the issue we have here with the log jam downstream of, yes, Route 35, that's to a certain extent man-made, and to a certain extent, it's natural. It's my understanding that ODOT dug an artificial channel, the one that is now clogged with logs, years ago when they constructed US Route 35, the bridge over the Little Miami. Anytime you do that, you build a man-made channel, the rivers, over time, the river's going to want to adjust and go back to a configuration that it is comfortable to, not necessarily the configuration that we constructed for it. And that's what the river's trying to do here. And that's what it's doing. It's the energy dynamics. It wants to go down this other side channel. So that's why it's depositing all these logs in that other main channel and creating a hazard for canoeists. But we've worked together, as you mentioned earlier in the past, we gave 25,000 to Beaver Creek Township to go in and do some work to try to keep these channels open and safe for recreational paddlers. And that's what this subsidy agreement here this evening is for. It's in the amount of $92,300. So it's more. But again, to go in and make that channel passable, safe for paddlers, you know, clean out some of the log jams of trash and debris without necessarily getting in the stream and, you know, trying to run a bulldozer down it. So it's more of a controlled management technique. And, you know, it's something that we would like to partner with Beaver Creek Township in, hence the offer of the subsidy agreement to do the work. And then over the long term, maybe we can develop some management plans to address this on a more regular basis and keep both channels, if necessary, maintained so we can facilitate safe passage of paddlers and reduce flooding and address some of the other issues that are there at hand. So this money is from our Governor Dewine's new H2O Rivers Initiative. So it's something that we just started working on projects with this biennium. So this funding's from that H2O Rivers Initiative and something that we're really starting to implement a lot of projects under across the state. So hopefully it looks agreeable to you all and you're willing to adopt. So any questions?
Thank you for the presentation and the consideration of our needs in this township. One question I had, and it was more of a technical question, just related to the way the funding is structured, and it references prevailing wage. And so I believe it was River Rangers is who we worked with.
Correct.
And so, and I understand and recall the funding mechanism for that. My question, I guess, being, would we be able to essentially contract with them again? Were they a prevailing wage?
Correct.
Correct. They were a con- okay. I wanted to make sure that that was there because they did a good job and appeared that they were conscientious about their work. And then the second question I had was as far as a deadline for completion of the scope of work. So can you clarify that, just so we have that on record?
Let's see. What page is that on? I don't recall. Did we put- did we put the end of this?
I don't recall finding it through there. There's a reference to that if the work is not completed by the completion date, then funds would be returned. And that's I'm trying to determine what that finish line looks like.
The completion date needs to be completed by December 31st, 2024.
Thank you. That's what I thought it was.
This calendar year.
Was that that line? I'm sorry.
Page, my apologies, page two of the agreement.
Okay.
Which is under full point six, VI.
And so my only question then is relative to that deadline, is there an opportunity? Do we know that the resources are available to do the work during the season that you can do it within?
Correct. And actually, not only available, there is a greatest sense of urgency that we address this as soon as possible. Not to speak towards the potential project manager and contractor, the River Rangers, but I think they would articulate that now is the time to act. And they're fully aware that this project would need to be completed by the end of the calendar year.
And they're available.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Otherwise, I had no other questions. Again, thank you for-
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Recognizing the need.
And working with us.
And working with us on the financial support side of it, so.
Okay. I'll make a motion, number 202-403-25-ADMIN-F, to accept the H2O grant agreement between Beaver Creek Township and the Ohio Department of Natural Resources in the amount of $92,300, and authorize the Township Administrator to sign for the Board as presented.
Second.
Ms. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Kratz?
Yes.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming.
Look forward to working with you on this.
Thank you. Thank you, all.
Ms. Taft, did you have anything you'd like to add or comment?
Well, I never lost words. But you all know of my love of the Little Miami River and all the scenic rivers. And so this is very exciting to know that the Township and the state are going to be working together to make the river safer and to make it more accessible to people and to help preserve it and maintain it for the current time and hopefully into the future. And I want to thank you all for that very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate your advocacy as well and you're a lot of the reason why this awareness is there.
Thank you.
That's true.
We're going to have another legislative float this summer in June, and I hope that you will come again with us.
I will.
And enjoy a day on the river. Because to me, the land looks a lot different from the river's angle than the river looks from the land's angle. And it's really important that people realize there's a difference and that what we do on the land really affects what happens in the river. So we appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Board. Moving along, we have no items under Green County Sheriff's Office, Human Resources, but we do have one item that was a holdover from last meeting, and that is under Community Development at Risk. It's accepting of donated carbon monoxide detectors. The Board requested a resolution be drafted to accept these carbon monoxide detectors. And our firm view is the drafted resolution in the format specifically in reference to the Ohio Revised Code to accept the 50 donated carbon monoxide detectors. It can be passed as presented. And Mr. Grogen is here, if you have any further questions.
I have no further questions. Do you have any? Okay, I make a motion, Resolution Number 202-403-25-CDR-A, accepting the donation of carbon monoxide detectors as presented.
Second.
Ms. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Kratz?
Yes. Thank you. IT, Finance Department, Cemetery Software.
Yes, Board. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Molden and Ms. Martin, who has a demonstration for our new web cemetery software. So they're going to take over the computer here and put up on the screen and walk you through some of the advancements we have.
So I'd like to recognize Nicole. She's been doing a great job on this implementation. She's been doing a lot of the day-to-day stuff in the software. And then there were some data we actually had to manually enter, and she's entered all that.
And she looks very comfortable in the administrator seat.
She does. No, thank you. Where do you want to start?
You can go ahead and start your piece.
Okay.
So what we're looking at is the, is your user interface or the-
Yep, this is as soon as-
This is the residence inter-
This is ours. So as soon as I log in, this is what it looks like. We can search by customers. You can search by locations, if you know, like, deceased record. I guess customer is probably the easiest way. You can search of all interactions that they've had with us. So if they called in and had a complaint or they called in, you can log everything and everything's kept there.
So it's a CRM as well?
Mm-hmm. So previously, with all of our cemeteries, we would, like, all of our burials, we would scan them in and keep them in our OneDrive. And then we would attach that to like the receipt and VIP. This will house everything for us with each customer, well, deceased record. You can upload documents onto it. I can pull, you can just search a section and I can show you what that looks like. So you can pull up the section and it'll show you each grave in the section, if it's occupied, what's going on there, when they were buried, their service date and all of that. You can edit all of them and then-
If you were to click on one of those, does it actually go to-
Yep, it takes you to all the hyperlinks, see anything that is like that bold font. So it'll take you, if I click here, it'll take you to the customer. If I click over here, it'll take you to each individual grave. And it'll tell you everything about that person. And then there's the documents place down here where you can add whatever documents. You can upload their obituaries.
So the deeds that we sign would go into the system and be housed here?
They could be, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Right now, they're just the paper copies in the office, but they could be. This also generate the deeds for us. This also generate the deeds for us. So if you have a customer and you put in all their information and you go to our contracts, it'll generate, it'll pull everything, like their name, it'll pull all of that. Previously, we were using like a Word document and they had areas where you would have to kind of manually manipulate them to fit properly on the paper. And now it'll have all of those contracts on here. So we're able to, it'll pull everything out. So instead of having to do it in two places, it'll just kind of do that for us now.
And is this housed on our server? Is the software as a service where it's housed in the cloud? Or where is this data?
It's software as a service.
Okay.
Yes.
And then do we own the data as far as if we were to ever switch to a different provider?
They have the data. And when we signed the agreement, we agreed that they would have the data. And then if we would leave them, there's a fee.
Okay. They would export it?
Yes. Yes. Ms., you have any shot, Terry?
Does that satisfy, when it is in that format, as far as software as a service and they're holding it in the cloud, does that satisfy our records retention requirements?
I believe so. I mean, we can pull the data. If anybody wants a public record, we can run a report or pull the data out. So.
It does. So when you updated last year, we switched everything to permanent or electronic. That allowed us to go paperless and put things in the cloud as well.
So we were going to show you the maps in here. The maps are color-coded and we do have some work to do with those because they have some categories that they're showing that kind of don't make sense. Like, one of them is the sold category. There's just a few graves with that, but we're going to change them over. There's burials on those, so it should say occupied. So the blue is occupied and some of the, like, the darker pink are obstruction. Like, there's a tree there or something like that. But we can look at any grave and see whether, you know, what's available or what's not available by, just by looking at the map.
So you can click on like a random spot and click on the link and it'll take you to that whole section. And you can see everything that's going on in that section from the map itself. We can customize those colors too and change things to how we want them.
And the information as far as who is placed where or which lot is sold but not occupied or which lots are not sold and available, that came from the road department project?
That came from our software, our old software, the data we had in there.
Okay.
Yes. But we do need to update a few of these because some of them say empty. And really, they're just ones that we're not going to use because of location or whatever.
Okay.
So we're going to update all those. We really just want to have three statuses. We want to have occupied, I guess, for obstruction, and then reserved and-
Do not use.
Do not use. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And do you know how many approximately we have still not sold or available?
The ones that are reserved, if you can, I don't know if you can go in a little more, in that purple, those are reserved, those are bought, and they just don't have burials.
So just the-
We purchased that adjoining property years ago.
Yes.
For the potential of expanding.
Yes.
We have room to expand.
Yes. And this is Lot One Nicole's showing. And then there's also Lot Two as well. And Lot Two shows some empty ones up towards the front, but nobody really has wanted to buy those, I think. So.
Sure.
Being up by the road. So that's our software.
Wow, that's great. We waited a long time.
Yeah, I would suggest maybe talk to IT, it's for Paragon. So there is a source, a service called API Nation.
Okay.
So Adam, Peter, think about it. So API Nation essentially is cloud-based and you can, they will interface. And if they don't have an interface, they will write an interface.
Oh, okay.
They can create a flattened PDF copy of everything that exists in this cloud over into a OneDrive cloud. And it's instantaneous. I mean, it's like within seconds. Whenever a document's uploaded here, it's backed up over here.
Okay.
And it's, the cost is $10 a month.
Oh, nice.
It's low cost. Something that if your API Nation's the name of it, something you might just look at to make sure you have a flattened PDF copy of everything.
Okay. Will do.
Okay. By the way, it's great. You're welcome to stay the rest of the meeting or make sure you're back.
No, I'll hand it back over to Ryan.
I had about 50 questions.
I told you you had one.
No.
You had a limited board.
Thank you. Public service?
No items.
Fire?
Yes, Board, I'd like to turn it over to Assistant Chief Merks, who will kick it off with a recognition of excellence.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for your time this evening. My first item on the list is recognition of excellence for our current EMS billing coordinator, Ms. Amy Hiles. We wanted to recognize her because over a year ago, she recognized that our previous EMS billing company was not meeting the obligation they had in the agreement. They were not following through. They had a lot of problems. So she had some concern about that and led an investigation to look at other EMS billing companies. And ultimately ended up leaving Change Healthcare, and we are now using AccuMed. And just recently, Change Healthcare basically went out of business abruptly and canceled a number of contracts with some neighboring departments. And they're now all scrambling to try to find a new EMS billing company. But we wanted to recognize Amy because she saw this a year ago coming. And through her efforts, got us over to AccuMed, which is doing a great job, doing a better job than we have before. So we're situated in a very good position. And we just wanted to recognize her. She does a lot of good work for the township, and this is a great example of it.
That's great.
Thank you, Board. This was on TV recently too. A lot of the area fire departments were scrambling, so.
This was a very good decision made and put us in a very good position compared to the other departments.
Well, she also helped recover monies that was due to us.
Yes. She's worked tirelessly to get more income for the township and recover monies. So, yeah, she's doing a great job.
Thank you.
All right. Our second item is a request to accept the resignation of firefighter Joe Lampton. He has submitted his two-week notice. He is resigning from the fire department to change careers. He's actually, has chosen to go back into his previous career as an accountant. And he was just telling us today that he's got an opportunity to move up. And he has found that the fire service is a little more demanding than he thought. And he mentioned it's a lot of work and for some other personal reasons, but it's all related to going back to his career. So he spoke highly of the department. We did an exit interview with him and asked him a number of questions. And he spoke highly of the training that he got here. And one thing I thought that I wanted to mention here that I noted, he said, he said that he actually is leaving the department a better person he was than when he came here. So he gained some. And that's a reflection on the folks that worked with him. So I wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion for, Motion Number 20240325-fire-a, to accept the resignation of firefighter Joe Lampton effective April 2nd, 2024. Joe Lampton is eligible for reemployment with Beaver Creek Township.
Second, and we wish him all the best.
Yes.
Ms. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Kratz?
Yes.
Thank you, Board. All right. For our next few items, I'm going to turn it over to Division Chief Easter, and he'll take you through this.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First item that's there is the approval of the Wright-Patterson Air Force Base Fire Department Mutual Aid Agreement. They have provided us an updated agreement. Wright-Patt is one of the fire departments that actually provides the most mutual aid of any of our other mutual aid partners to Beaver Creek Township. There are a couple of reasons for that. One of the biggest ones is that they come as one of the most well-staffed departments when they arrive to us. So we routinely will get a fire engine with four people on it. And we have a hard time getting to that level ourselves as we distribute our resources a little bit farther than they have to for their concentration on the base. Also, they enjoy coming off base and interacting with our folks. Our call volume is definitely different than what they see on the base. So a couple of things within that agreement that are updates. The first one is a safety officer. They provide when we ask for a fire engine or a ladder truck, a chief officer that comes with that, and they have for years. So it's really not a change in the response, but it's articulating what that's for. And that's so that they can have some oversight or overwatch on their staff. And we do the same thing when we send mutual aid to neighboring communities for structured fires or other critical incidents like that. We send our shift captain, in this case, to oversee and make sure that our folks are safe. A lot of times, we will codify that role as the incident safety officer and assign it to the Wright-Patterson Fire Chief. So this mutual aid agreement just really reflects what we're actually doing. The second change in there is, again, another codification of the hazardous materials response and how that they see those and how we will work together to mitigate those. And the third is related to military aircrafts, if they were to crash in Beaver Creek. Identification of the Wright-Patterson Air Force Base Chief may take incident command in that based on the federal statutes for that. So I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have about that agreement and ask for an approval.
Do you have any other questions? I move to, I make a motion for Number 20240325-fire-b, to approve the attached mutual aid agreement with Wright-Patterson Air Force Base and to authorize the township administrator to sign for the board.
Second. Ms. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Kratz?
Yes.
Thank you, Board. The next is a request to modify an existing purchase order that we brought to you a couple of meetings ago. The Ohio Fire Executive Program actually increased their tuition. And we brought to you a request for $10,000. It was actually $10,500. So before Captain Polis starts that class, we wanted to request the additional amount as well.
Okay. I'll make a motion 20240325-fire-c. I move to increase purchase request 24-fire-0019 to Ohio Fire Chiefs Association for Ohio Fire Executive Program tuition to the amount of $10,500 and to authorize the township administrator to sign for the board.
Second. Ms. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Kratz?
Yes.
Thank you, Board. And the last item that's in the packet for you is an update on the solar eclipse plan that's coming up on April 8th. That'll be Third Platoon, so Captain Lee Polis's shift. I've been working with him and Lieutenant Alex Ferguson to complete our incident action plan as we prepare for that. Our biggest risk is going to be, that we are planning for, is increased traffic volume, especially as it relates to US 35 and Interstate 675. So we do know of an event happening at the Green County Airport as well. So we are actually bringing our staffing up to our winter emergency level to allow us to actually place an additional crew at the airport. They're going to have a fly-in event. We don't know exactly how many planes yet, but we've been working with MAC Air on that. They're going to provide a place for us to stage an engine there. That will actually allow us to have two fire engines on the south side of US 35, as well as the existing three on the north side of 35. And the additional staffing, then, will also place a second medic on the south side of 35 at Station 64. So we're going to divide our resources, have a few extra resources in service. And then if we don't have any traffic congestion issues after the event is over, we will release those folks early. But making those plans. We're also engaging the fire department's auxiliary and the auxiliary communication branch of that specifically to make sure we have some distributed resources in the event that the state radio system would have some problems. We are prepared then to work on a secondary system at that point to deliver calls for service to our folks. All of our existing subscriber units can work directly with each other, so we don't have any concerns about being able to communicate. It's delivering the calls for service from dispatch to the crews out in the field that we're planning to overcome. So we should be in great shape as we move forward with that. The county is opening their emergency operations center as we are opening ours as well. And so we're planning to have one of our chief officers out at the county emergency operations center. And then I will plan to be here at ours to monitor the specific things that we're looking for that day. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
And Board, to complement that, our public service department is also on notice that they may be called in or staying over. The event is supposed to take place from approximately, I can't get the exact minute, but 1:00 in the afternoon to about 4:15, 4:18 in the afternoon. Many of our public service employees are released at 3:30. They fully understand they may have to stay over. And in addition, I know the Green County Sheriff's Office has been circulating overtime as well as additional deputies on patrol during that time as well.
And we have a trustee meeting that day as well.
We have a trustee meeting as well at 5:00. So Board, we also got notification, I believe, today that Wright-Patterson Air Force Base is anticipating 30,000 people to be at the Air Force Museum. So if we want to consider any deviation to our start time with our trustee meeting, now would be the time to make that motion. Be a 5:00 start time as it is regularly scheduled. If we wish to delay it, move it, or otherwise do normally scheduled business, now would be the time to have that discussion. We do also anticipate to swear in five firefighters that evening as well. And due to various travel schedules with board members, that's the best-
Family members and everything.
Yeah, that's the best availability as April 8th.
Couldn't we schedule it to 6:00 and give, I just hate to be stuck in a major traffic to go 5 miles.
I have no issue with 6:00 or 6:30 or whatever. It makes sense.
Okay. Do we need a motion to reschedule?
I would do it as a motion and then, yeah.
I'll make-
What would you prefer, time line, 6:00 or 6:30?
Or should I just make a motion to reschedule and then you'll?
We could do 6:00 regular meeting and then do the swearing-in ceremony at another prescribed time. The only issue, just for the Board's reference, it's also city councils meeting that evening. And we're trying to coordinate, I know Chief Van de Boss, that's his quarterly update to city council. Not that, we can't reschedule that, but do you want to notate that as well?
Sure.
So you want to just move to 6:00 or you want to?
6:00 would be fine.
Okay, I'll make a motion for next scheduled meeting of April 8th to change it to 6:00 PM.
Second.
Ms. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Kratz?
Yes.
Thank you, Board. That's all I have this evening.
Ms. Frick?
Nothing.
And fiscal officer?
Thank you, Board. One item for you tonight is certify the additional revenue that you approved by receiving the grant. You can pass it as presented.
Just got to get through that.
I'll make a motion, Resolution Number 20240325-fin-a, to certify additional revenue to the official certificate of available resources and to authorize supplemental appropriations for Fund 1,000 General Fund as presented.
Second.
Ms. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Kratz?
Yes.
Thank you, Board. That's all I have.
And the RPC update?
No, nothing to report.
TAC?
TAC was canceled.
Okay. OPOE, Regional Task Force?
We meet tomorrow, so I'll be able to until the next time around.
I do want to thank trustee Wallace for circling the grant opportunity from the Region 14 OPOE Task Force. That was shared with our substation and ACE Task Force for a possible grant submission.
And Regional Planning and Coordinating Commission of Green County. We have full commission tomorrow night and the Green at Woodgrass Cross. That's the nursing home. That is the Beaver Creek Township item on the agenda. There's, otherwise, there's only one Bath Township zoning map on that. Health Department?
Chief not here.
Not here. School superintendent, city manager, township administrator?
Meeting Wednesday.
Okay. Any items of interest on the agenda or not yet?
No, talking more about the solar eclipse planning as well as, apologies. That was a team's meeting. Mostly the solar eclipse planning.
Sure. Wright-Patterson Air Force Base restoration?
No, no meeting.
Township Association?
No meeting.
Investment oversight? Nothing to report?
They were trying to coordinate something probably for April, like I mentioned last meeting.
Yeah. And then Green County 911 Advisory Committee. Chief Easter, if you can maybe just give an update and also- Chief Easter, if you can maybe just give a update and also as relative to Bath Township and some of the other chatter that's been going on in the background?
Sure, so we do have enough to meet the state requirements for the plan to move forward. So that has been submitted to the state. We are in compliance with that before the deadline. We do have two townships actually that have voted to table their motions over some concerns with Green Central Communications and their bills that they have received from them, Bath Township being one. Bath Township, township administrator did send an email out across most of the township trustees in Green County, and I replied to that as the nine-one-one coordinator, and then we followed that up with a phone conversation. It went quite well. He's, he's got some concerns that, quite honestly, we've asked the same concerns here as Beaver Creek Township with the arrangements with Green Central, and we came to a different resolution than Bath Township is currently facing. So he is planning to go to the next nine-one-one commission meeting on April seventeenth. And then as well, we have one other township that is doing the same, and they've got some similar concerns. But they're from the eastern side and receive services directly from Green Central. So they're in a little bit different circumstance there. But more than sixty percent of the populace has passed at this point, so we are moving forward with that. City of Xenia is the only major municipality that has not met to vote on the plan yet. And then there are a couple of townships that have not met to vote, met to vote on the plan currently. So working through some of those issues at the moment.
And we're meeting on April seventeenth at nine A M.
Correct. And then in addition to that, we are working through getting things back online and was able to get access to A T and T's site to log into and take a look at our township or countywide, actually, database for streets. A bit of catching up that we need to do and some house cleaning that needs to be done. And the Frontier North or G T E is the other one that we're working to get access to at the moment. So we are working to get back on track, and Mr. Leaming has also just started today with his project with Countywide Dispatch, and him and I will be interfacing most likely next week as I took this week off for spring break.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, unless there's anything else to come before the board, this graph, you have anything else to say? Did you figure out that question? You had a hundred gallons of water in the Pacific Ocean?
Just thank you.
Thank you for being you. So keep being you. Entertained a motion to go into executive session under a higher revised code, Section one twenty-one point two-two G eight, to consider the confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance.
So moved.
Ms. Wallace?
Second.
Oh, second, sorry. Ms. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Kratz?
Yes.
I make a motion to come out of executive session?
Second.
Ms. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Kratz?
Yes. Thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Kratz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.